And Kara, if you can just keep your eyes open in case joins us and needs to be added in.
Yes.
Okay. We're going to convene the Board Policy Committee for December 7th, 2020. Again, we have a very full agenda for this meeting. I am going to ask that I'm going to endeavor to take a break every hour. If I forget, somebody please remind me. And I guess, do we need to do introductions? I think it's the usual. Okay, so I'm good. In the interest of time, since we're already late, I'm going to ask that staff who are going to be presenting, if you could introduce yourselves when you, you know, when it's your turn to present, that would be helpful. And I think I'm going to. Can I just read off the names of people who are part of this committee? So Board members, I'm Rita Moore, Chair. We have Director Julia Brim Edwards. We have Director Ailey Lowry, who is Chair of the Board, and Director Scott. Scott, what's your Bailey? Sorry. Who is the Vice Chair? I've only known Scott for about 20 years, so sorry. And we have the Board Representative, the Student Representative to the Board, Nathaniel Shu. And we have Student Representative to the Committee, Jackson Weinberg. And I think the other student representative to the committee is not currently with us, so. Okay, so I'm going to just leap into this. And the first item on the agenda is the Student Suicide Prevention Policy. And we have Amy Rona, Mila Rodriguez, Adair, and James Loveland, who are going to be talking to us about the draft policy. So Mila and Amy, I think you're going to be walking us through this.
Yes. And Amy, did you say you were going to present, or did you?
I would like to present. And I'm trying to do that. Do I need?
Ooh, I don't know if you can.
Just a second, and I'll sign me permission.
Okay, okay.
You should now be able to present.
Here we go. Can you see? That. We wanted to start with the slideshow, right, Mila?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you all see that?
Yep.
Yes, can you do?
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you, Amy. We will start with some introductions, but I first wanted to say that I'm super grateful to be here again in front of you to talk about Senate Bill 52, ADDIE Act. I feel super privileged that I get to be the one, along with Amy and James, to be able to continue to bring to life ADDIE and the feedback that we have received thus far. So my name is Mila Rodriguez Adair, and I use she/her pronouns, and I identify as Lan Nix. And I'm a QHP, a Qualified Mental Health Professional, and Special Assignment with Student Success and Health, but often I refer myself as a district-wide school social worker, doing many things within our department, and one of them being is implementing Suicide, Senate Bill 52, ADDIE Act. Amy, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. Amy Rona, she/her pronouns, identifies as white, and work in the Student Success and Health Department with Mila and James, and I support a lot of different work within that department. But today, yeah, really honored and excited to be here with Mila, talking about this work.
James, yeah.
Hey, good evening, everyone. James Loveland, Senior Director of the Student Success and Health Department. He/him pronouns, identifies as white. I'm just really here for moral support for Amy and Mila, who have done an amazing amount of work to bring you this draft proposal tonight. And so I'm just so appreciative of their energy and effort around all of this.
Awesome. Thank you, James. So the last time we were here, we were able to present our engagement plan as far as how we were going to engage students across the district and what working groups we were going to be facilitating conversations for feedback regarding our policy. And we had asked for an extension, given the feedback that we had received was that working groups were having a hard time getting together, given, you know, online distance learning and just the beginning of fall. And so we were able to actually capture even more feedback during this timeframe. Amy, can you move on to the next slide? So for today, we're going to focus on kind of like summarizing some of the feedback that we were able to receive from the working groups. And Amy, please jump in if I miss anything throughout the presentation today. But we were able to highlight some feedback from the Sud Prevention Student Advisory Committee. We were able to also gather a lot of feedback from ADDIE's father, and we continue to receive feedback from him. His name is Lon Staub, and we have made an agreement that we're going to meet with him at least once a month so that he can continue to provide not just consultation regarding this policy, but ongoing implementation regarding how this could potentially look like and what his hopes and dreams were as he was advocating for this policy to pass statewide. We were also able to meet with our district-wide student council, which was super fantastic to be able to get feedback from them, along with a MIR student group at Lincoln High School, George Middle School, and their student leadership group. We are going to be meeting with Lines for Life this Wednesday. That was also another working group that you all had wanted us to connect with. And thankfully, we were able to finally get into their books to be able to connect with them regarding their feedback, to which we're going to continue to do. We're going to meet with the rest of the groups that we were not able to meet due to timeframes and just not having working groups that we're meeting. And the other one that we were not able to get feedback was SMERC. They were going through a lot of their own transitions, and they were trying to capture information and feedback on their own and to send it off to us, and they just have not been able to do that. And so we, as soon as we get anything from them, of course, we will be implementing any feedback in future work that we're doing for this particular policy. So in summary, some of the things that were really highlighted from a lot of the students that we were connected with were very few things. One of them being was that students wanted to receive or want to receive peer-to-peer training, similar to youth mental health first-day training, but specific for young people. Young people to be able to understand what are the signs, what are the resources that are available for them to be able to connect their fellow students to those particular students. Often, the feedback that I heard was, "Mila, we don't want to talk to adults. Adults don't understand us. It's not that easy to just make that call to that one line that where we don't know who the other person is on the other line." They kept saying, "What is, what kind of curriculum training is available for us to receive so that we know how to provide a direct support?" Along with being able to have resources that were available in the right there and then in case they didn't know how to research them, in case they didn't want to ask the adults. So that was one prime feedback that we got, along with making sure that everyone at PPS is trained in understanding what the warning signs and seeing them and talking about suicide and being able to connect students and families to supports immediately. And so often, when they ask for clarity around what we meant by "everyone", people always said, people always then asked again, "Do you mean like the bus drivers? Do you mean the cafeteria folks? Do, how, what do you mean by 'all'?" And they wanted us to reassure them that it was every single person at PPS getting some form of training regarding suicide prevention, and mostly when it came to the warning signs and those resources and the folks that they were able to connect them to in order for them to get that support. So that was super important to a lot of the students and their feedback. For Lon Staub, he gave us a lot of feedback that was very similar to what the students were wanting and a lot of what we already currently have, which was, he was super grateful to see that we have access to suicide screenings and we have access to mental health supports in a lot of our schools. He was happy to see all that. But most importantly, one of the things that he keeps reiterating for us is accountability. So having a system that collects data, having a system that allows us to be able to paint a story as far as what are the gaps for implementation and for resources, for curriculum, for training, for supports. And we currently do as best as we can, but he wants to see a system that allows everybody to be able to communicate and have a centralized way to collect that information so that there is accountability on each of the schools that are implementing it, along with us as a district. So that has been something that he's been providing a lot of guidance to us on, but most, but was very, very, very important to him. Amy, did I miss anything in regards to that summary? I just want to make sure.
I just think we were very struck by whoever we talked to at whichever school, at whichever age range, that the themes were so consistent.
Absolutely.
That was super interesting. Maybe I would just add, another consistent theme was, students are often told to check in with a trusted adult when they're feeling, when there is suicidality or mental health concerns, or connecting their friends to a trusted adult. And pretty consistently, students would say, "What happens next? We need to know what happens after we talk to the trusted adult," which I thought was fascinating, and which is why we ask students for their perspective, right? So as adults, we think we know what happens next, but students may not be going to those adults because they don't know what happens next. But I think that that would be a part of our training as well. Other than that, no, Mila, I think you absolutely summarized it.
And then we'll be going through the policy after this. So I'm so far in regards to this summary. Is there anything that's coming up for you all? Any questions or thoughts that you have before we move on to the next thing?
I just so appreciate the thoroughness with which you've really listened to people and also that whole, you know, it means all the adults, and I think that that's really huge. So just again, very impressed with all of the work and thoughtfulness here in this work.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's definitely been fun to be able to connect with them. One of the things that I often say about young people is that you give them the platform and they will take lead. And that's been probably the most beautiful thing to witness is that they have a lot to say about this and they want their voices to be heard. So I appreciate that. Amy, can you move us on to the next slide? Something that we were given feedback to was considering, you know, what kind of plan or what kind of recommendations even us, would we have, given all the feedback, given this policy, we had all the money in the world, what would that look like? Well, I, we would, we were thinking about potentially hiring a full-time data analyst, somebody that can really look into developing and implementing a tracking system that will actually help us with that accountability piece that Lon keeps, you know, asking about regarding that. And another full-time position solely focusing on the implementation of Senate Bill 52 and ADDIE Act, that's part of my position and a huge part of it. And I definitely have a lot of other buckets of work in the other assigned duties. That and that, you know, a huge part of it is that it's having one position, that one person that can solely focus on that would be all the hopes and dreams that we have. And then we also understand that everybody can, you know, do that right now. So that's why Amy and I are doing a lot of that work right now. The other thing was having a staff suicide prevention training in the right now, in the classrooms. Yes, of course, Amy and I can put a video together, put it on pepper, and have that be something that folks can watch on their own time immediately. However, you know, if we had all the money in the world, that could be professionally done by an organization, an agency who knows how to do that, knows how to create e-learning modules, knows how to focus on adult learning, knows how to focus on all these concepts in order for them, in order for us to have it accessible and readily available for folks in the right now. Because that was one of the things that students, and I believe you all have asked us, "Why are these trainings not available right now? Why aren't students receiving this in the right now?" And so one of the things that I had to explain to a student is the convoluted process of getting a mandatory training is not as easy as one, two, three. And so they're like, "But why? Why is this not easy?" And so, yes, it's, I wish it was, and I, it's not. And so that was one of, if we had our larger dreams put into place, these are some of the few things that we would actually hope to consider in the future as we're thinking about this particular policy. But most importantly, this policy is really talking about a very important factor, young people that are experiencing suicide radiation, young people that are experiencing grief, sadness. And that's happening today. We receive suicide screenings all day, every day. And so those are some of the hopes and dreams. Amy, I don't know if you have any other hopes and dreams that you were thinking about that we were, that we missed.
No, I think you got it.
Any questions about that before we move on to the policy?
I have a question. Thank you for sharing the student, the outcomes of the student engagement process and sharing their perspectives. In terms of the, oops, can you leave the slide, the last slide back up? If that's possible.
Sorry about that. I clicked the wrong thing. It is possible. Yep.
So I'm wondering if, based on best practices, if you look at districts, other school districts that have track records of, you know, caring for and low, you know, suicide ideation and actual suicide rates, what they would say the biggest bang for their buck is in terms of if they had unlimited resources, how do they apply it in a way against best practices that's led to positive results? And, you know, I don't know if it's studying the data or if it's, obviously, data is really important, but is it, you know, is it training or is it something, is it something else? And I'm curious about whether that's a question you've looked at. At all.
Amy, please jump in if you have any other thoughts. But yes, it's a question that we, as a state, have been pondering on. Amy and I attend the Oregon Alliance, where other district members from across, or the state, other school members that are also implementing ADDIE Act, Senate Bill 52, have been pondering this question. Actually, at our last meeting, we spent quite a bit some time talking about what kind of collection, what data we're interested in collecting, what is best practice as far as what data to collect, and what tracking systems are currently in place or not. And most folks do not have a tracking system for that. Most folks do not have any idea what it is that they're hoping to collect, but that there is a desire to collect that data. There is a desire to have something that paints a picture of what is missing that we could do better as a district, as a school, for our students and families in regards to suicide prevention. However, I would say that I think that we're all still kind of grappling what that can look like or what that is. I don't know, Amy. I don't know if you have had, if you have some thoughts, more or less, because you've been part of the alliance for longer than I have. So I don't know if that has been something that has been talked about before, but these are conversations that I feel like we were all kind of trying to decipher what that can look like in the near future, given this policy.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a great question, Julia. A number of districts are starting to hire one full-time FTE to just focus on Senate Bill 52. So that is something that districts are moving towards. Honestly, what we frequently hear, what we hear more frequently, you know, a year ago, what we would hear more frequently is, "We do suicide screenings. Our staff do them, but nobody checks them. Nobody looks into them. Nobody follows up with staff about them. They just go into a black hole." So it's exciting for us to know that there is an increased focus on this across the state, and there will be increased FTE across the state, so that kind of thing doesn't happen. I think in our situation, you know, while, as Mila moves into talking about the policy, we talk about every school district that the legislative managers, every school district has, has a policy in place. And then within that, every school has a plan, right? And so to have some FTE of a data clerk dedicated to, you know, we are going to be asking people to create a plan, and we want to have an inventory of what curriculum is each school doing. How many suicide screenings have they done? Have their staff been trained? Have they done PD at their staff meeting? Like, we want to be able to keep track of all that. So I think to have one full-time person as support and consult, in addition to us still being available, as well as a little bit of data clerk FTE to be able to analyze and keep track of all of those things, I think would be huge and would really support Lon Staub's ask around how do we make sure we're not checking a box, right? We can say, "We've got a school district plan and policy." We can say, "We've told all of our schools to do this." But beyond that, if we don't have some FTE dedicated to it, it's very difficult for us to support adequately and hold folks accountable and for the end goal, right, of keeping students alive.
Yeah, and I would, the other thing that I was going to say is that we started an inventory last year to collect some of this information per school. And of course, we didn't require anybody to submit the Google form, but it was part of my desire to kind of address where is each school at with training, with curriculum, with implementation, and with suicide screenings, and with identifying who on, who in your school is responsible to implement suicide prevention curriculum, who in your school is working through that every year. So we are hoping to do this inventory again through the end of the year. However, it's not something that is required as of right now, but would be helpful to have extra support to continue to address the gaps that we're, you know, addressing that inventory that we collected.
Great, thank you.
Can I just mention, I think, tracking data and figuring out what data to track, it's, it can be used not just for accountability, but also to monitor prevalence. And because, I mean, my, it's been a while since I looked at the, the youth survey. But as I recall, the, the numbers on suicidality were pretty horrifying. And I mean, I, I think this is an unrecognized issue among children. So I guess I have two questions. One, can you give us a sense at this point about prevalence? Like, how, I mean, you were saying you, you receive, what do you call them, checks or screenings? Like, all day, every day? How frequently do you get screenings?
We have had about 70 suicide screenings so far this fall, and that number is significantly lower than last fall because of distance learning and access to students. And the screening is just one part of it. I mean, Mila and I will do regular consultations throughout the week as well.
Right. But even though the, everybody's assumption, I think, is that mental health issues have, have been exacerbated, if anything, by the COVID and the distance learning and all that. So if this is a down year and we're already looking at 70 screenings, that's pretty significant. And I think it's important.
Oh, you're muted, Rita.
Can you hear me? Okay. I think my cat stepped on something, sorry. So I think, I mean, I think of suicidality as, as a sign of other things not going well. So if we can kind of monitor that, it can help us identify areas where we need to improve, you know, the overall experience of students. My, my other question was, it goes back to the, when you say "all," do you really mean "all"? So we have the capacity now, there's going to be a question mark at the end of this, but can I assume that we have capacity now in every school, including K-5, to, to do, to identify and provide appropriate services for kids expressing suicidal thoughts? It's not just at the high school level, for example.
K-12.
Okay.
Okay. This is Amy. I might have missed something, but just when we're talking about tracking and accountability with regard to this new law and a new sort of accountability expectations, I hope this team also talked about the rigorous tracking that's been done on all the downstream-type interventions, like the many years of tracking on the DBT work and the effect that that has had on suicide prevention. I don't know if you guys talked about that.
We haven't talked about it here right now, today. I guess I'm wondering if, if we should be shifting into talking about the policies. I know we have a limited amount of time, and this is a discussion Mila and I are happy to have with anybody, anytime. We really appreciate people's interest in it, and I also want to be aware of the time and want to make sure, sure that we get to.
Let's, so we've only got another, we've got like 10 minutes allotted. So Amy, if we can take that question offline. And are there any other questions about the, about what was presented? Or can we move right into discussing the policy? Okay, so can we?
Rita, sorry, I couldn't get my microphone off mute. I'm wondering, on the student engagement information, do you have additional backup data that this, like, is what informed the slide creation?
Can you specify what you're asking, like, numbers or what, what kind of data you're referring to?
So I don't know how much it was, but that's like, obviously, a summary of the, the feedback. And I'm just, was wondering if there was, there was more than a summary or other information?
Yes, I mean, we took notes as much as we could when we met with students. And so we have those notes typed up in Google Drive. And if you want to review them, we're more than happy to share them. We didn't take note of, like, the race and ethnic background of students and/or how many students at times. Just because, when I remember, for one particular working group, they didn't want me to identify that. And so they kind of just wanted to give feedback. And, but if that's something you're wanting to review, yeah, we'd be more than happy to share that.
Yeah, thanks. That would be useful. I mean, I love this, I love the high-level summary, but sometimes it's good just to do a deep dive into the more detailed feedback.
Oh, oh, no, for sure. Yeah, 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 yeah. This, the high-level overview was per recommendation of Liz to keep it high-level rather than it be too detailed. I think she must know that Amy and I are very detailed-oriented people that we can get into rabbit holes and have a hard time getting out of. So, yeah, we're more than happy to share that.
Sometimes rabbit holes are worth exploring.
For sure. Amy and I totally believe in that. What was that?
And sometimes they're rabbit holes, but. So can we, can we move into looking at the, the actual policy? And let me, let me just kind of frame this up. The, the hope is that we can bring this to a first reading as soon as possible, ideally at the next board meeting, so that we can, as, I believe this is, have we missed the state deadline or is the deadline in January? We're, we're already.
We, we're past the deadline, but I think the committee and staff agreed several months ago that it was worth doing a more thorough job on the, based on the engagement and not just a cut and paste on the statute. And I think, and the OSBA policy was really not much more than that. I think you'll find this is really thoughtful work. So there's urgency to it, but I think. So there's urgency to it, but I think, but that is the history.
Okay, so, so I mentioned that because there is, there is some urgency in, in getting this, getting this process through the committee expeditiously. So I'm going to ask if anybody has any kind of overall questions or comments about the policy draft as it currently stands? Are there any sort of conceptual issues that anybody has?
Other than more just technical issue, just trying to track this. So we had this before the Board Policy Committee in June of twenty, June 22nd. It came back and what we have now is a non-redline draft. Was there something that's like bridges us from the last discussion or what? I mean, the one from June 22nd is very different. Process question, I'm just trying to figure out what.
And Julia, I can speak to that. They, we did not think that we can absolutely get you and anyone else a red line. It was such a significant, and you know, I mean, it wasn't iterative. It was a, a big move from one version to the other with so much new text that it didn't actually show much. It, it basically filled in substance in the outline and then added some brand new sections. So I know that those red lines are really helpful and I, I regret I didn't offer that to you as well. I should have thought about that. It just was such, it's almost a brand new policy in a very, from a very bare framework of the old one.
That, that's okay. That's, just, just knowing that, that's helpful. Was June 27th the last time we looked at the actual language?
I think at the actual language, there was conversation about the engagement at various meetings after that. And some discussion about the history of the policy and the PowerPoint that Mila and Amy did in October, I believe. But, but I think the actual, like, looking at the, the words on the page of the policy, there hasn't, the, I'm not sure if it's June 22nd, but I think that was the last time.
Yeah, well, okay, great. I'm just trying to take my old versions and the notes I wrote and share them forward. Thank you.
Okay, so any other kind of big picture questions or comments?
I just, I just want to echo what Liz said about, you know, that the state deadline may have passed, but I so appreciate the very thoughtful and deep work that is shown here by staff. And I know that Amy and Mila, you both dedicate so much of your time. I think, Mila, you said you're the district social worker to students. And, and it's very clear in this policy that that heart for students and that heart, especially for this family in particular, is prevalent in this work. And so just want to, want to thank you for that. And, you know, sometimes policies can, we get into the language and we go down those wormholes, rabbit holes. But this really at its heart is very clear that this is, this is a labor of love for our students. And I just want to thank you for that.
Okay, and I.
Likewise, and I, and I think it also, to me, the, it's so clear now what the system we want to set up will look like. In terms of the scaffolding, it's, it's really clear. The accountability piece that Addy's father spoke to is really clearly addressed by that. So just great work. Appreciate it.
Just another like framing question about the, the policy. Refresh my memory, is there going to be an AD as well or is, or is the policy the, the district framework?
We've talked a lot with our new best friend Liz Large about this.
Yeah, so I, I think that, that where the plan sits, right? Because what this policy says is you shall develop a plan and it shall have these components. And so I, I don't think we know exactly whether the, the plan itself will be in the AD or in a different governance resource document. So this is the first step. I think we're clear, I, I, when I listen to Mila and Amy, they, they, you can just hear it when they talk, they see it, they, and they know how to build it. And we'll just be partners in figuring out where to house the information. We've talked about making sure that resources are consistent and that they are not repeated in multiple areas, but linked, right? So department websites, school websites, ADs, student handbooks, all of those things have materials that when it's up, when they're updated, they're updated uniformly. So we've actually talked quite a bit about information management on this one. And that's why you're getting a really long-winded answer on the AD, because we think it's important, this sits in a lot of places that is accessible to the entire community and especially to students and how they find it in all the different ways and how we make sure it's consistently maintained.
Yeah, and I didn't ask the question because I was expecting one necessarily, but just wanted to know what the, what the framework was. So just the follow-on I would have is, so we had a deadline for the, for the policy. What does the act require in terms of the deadline for, you know, every school having its own suicide prevention plan?
Julia, I don't believe, I'm looking for my folder here with, with the statutory language. I don't believe that there's a deadline to have the plan developed. There's a deadline to get the policy in place. I will, I will circle back if I'm wrong in my recall, but many components of this plan already exist. And you can hear that there's an urgency to get them, get the district plan done and then figure out how to roll that to make sure each school building has its own plan. But I believe the state deadline is, is for the policy itself.
Yeah. And from our experience in talking with our friends across the state, the only, the districts, up until about a month ago, probably, the districts that had passed the policy already were ones that took the OSBA one, wrapped the box and moved forward. So they were not engaged and had not built it out the way we have.
Yep.
So, yeah, and I just wanted to just reinforce what somebody said about the heart and soul. I mean, huge shout out to Mila, who has absolutely put her heart and soul in this. So, yeah.
If you were a student in a PPS school, when would you expect for, on the policy number four to be in place? Which is the requirement that every school has its own suicide prevention plan. Is that next fall?
I mean, I, I would, I mean, I would say, I mean, Amy, even correct me if I'm wrong, that's something that Amy and I consult with today. We are currently supporting schools at implementing their own suicide prevention plan today. And so that's because we're not waiting for the policy to pass. That's not because we were waiting for a policy to be put into place. I believe that even before I came in, Amy was already providing a lot of consultation per school. My intention behind getting that inventory last year was to help me in supporting schools in, in implementing their own suicide prevention plan, which we've been trying to do as much as we can, given the little amount of hours that we have every day. I'm hoping that if we either get further FTE and/or once this gets put into place, then we can, we, then we can start talking about implementing actual plans to support schools to, to feel like they can actually put this requirement into place. However, most of our schools already have plans and they're not formalized like that, like how we are highlighting on, on four.
Great, thank you. And then my, my last question is, and this is more of mine, but the other tracking accountability, we have the district student success and health department, Will, and says something. Just in terms of the policy, do we think we're always going to have a student success and health department or will it name be changed as often happens at PPS? And would we rather, would we instead have something more generic? And this is just a drafting question.
I can, I can take that one, Director Brim Edwards. So, you know, I think, and this actually goes back to one of the questions you asked earlier, is, is what is it? What is the priority here? What, what have other districts done that has the most bang for their buck? And I think really, as a, as a department that's charged with responding to high acuity incidents with students, it is our sincere hope that school systems, the work that the MTSS department is doing, the work that, that individual building teams are doing, will put systems in place that are universal, that will hopefully eventually put us out of business. We, we know probably that that will, will never fully happen, but, but that is, that is, that is our hope. In the interim, we will be here as long as we're needed. And so, you know, I, I can't predict the future. But, but we will, you know, our, our team is, I'm so appreciative of the skill, empathy, compassion that they bring to our schools every day. And I, and I, I think, you know, we will be here in, with this name or the, another prolonged name.
And I think, James, as Mila and Amy and I talked about, I was always the voice of policies have to live for a long time. And so what you don't want it to be is stale if you tweak the name of the department, because you'll see this process is, it's a lot to engage with. And so we want to not have to update to correct those kinds of administrative changes. So I think, if, if I understood your question, Julia, it's whether we can think about how to kind of up-level that in case there's another adjective added someday. Yeah.
Totally fair statement, right? Because five years ago, we were Student Services, not the Student Success and Health Department. So.
Yeah, for twenty years, I've seen a lot of different names. I'm still tracking. So it's more of a, it's nothing to, about the body of work, but more like what it's called and that we don't in three years have somebody on policy that references an apartment that has a different name.
Could probably put in parentheses or its successor, close parentheses and deal with it so that we don't have to resurrect the policy in three years when we change it to the, you know, moving a word around. Question, do we have a corollary for suicide prevention amongst staff?
Well, in doing this work, this is, this is why we talk about everybody being trained, honestly. Because it, it's applicable when folks say, well, they don't work with students. I'm like, they work with humans. So this is something that you'll use with your friends, your neighbors, your family, your coworkers, and yes, students and families too. So it's something that's applicable across the board.
And I will say, and I will say that we have been connecting a lot of the adults to the resources that we actually give our students because they've been in need as well. So that's definitely something that we've been, unfortunately, unfortunately, connecting the adults that are experiencing some of their concerns to these resources.
I guess at some later date, formalizing that referral system or that, here's what to do if you see a coworker. You know, that'll happen informally, but to formalize that so that person gets connected with somebody will support them. Could be something to think about in our, our next bucket load of work. But yeah, I appreciate the spillover that this will have. We get everybody talking about it. That's, that's a good thing.
Mila, I wonder if there was anything you wanted to specifically call out or name or talk about in relation to, to the policy in its current state?
No, I think that you all were actually able to capture a lot of what, where my heart was at with this policy is that I really wanted to center the attention on the unfortunate loss that we had with Addy. And there is a reason to why their parents were advocating for this policy. And I, I promised Lon that I would do my best to always center Addy in everything that I do regarding suicide prevention in this district. And y'all were able to capture that. And so I'm super grateful that y'all allowed us the time and are committed to students just as much as we are.
Can we move this forward now officially?
Just, I have one, I have one last question. If we have all staff, what about, maybe this is a conversation with our partners, but like this, I know that, well, there's lots of strong relationships between students and sun, sun staff and other contractors who, especially the, our CDOs that are working closely with our students. And I know we have some training requirements for contractors that are working with students. And just curious, I know there's a sort of the, the push and pull with time and resources for additional training, but I'm wondering if that's something that there was a conversation about or discussion about and what the thinking is.
I appreciate Danny vigorously.
Oh, I was gonna say, there wasn't a discussion, but I think that both our sun providers and our RESJ partners have access to pepper and can sort of like access training. And so we can, as, as contracts get renewed, we can sort of like either in the next year's contracts or amend this year's contracts and add this to them.
And we, in our mental health contracts this year have, have added it, that they need to do PPS mandatory trainings. We cross check with the trainings they do with their own agencies, just so we're not wasting people's time. But so, yeah, leading into the future, I think along with Danny's partners, our, our mental health contractors also, as we add this mandatory training to the, to the menu, they will have access to it and will be asked to do it. And so it sounds like, Julia, you're thinking the language when we say all staff should, should call that out.
Yeah, I'm just, well, it'd be helpful, that's an easy add. And then my other question is another group of adults that students often have really close bonds with are coaches. I'm assuming if a coach is also a building staff person, but are, are they considered, they're also covered by the staff designation? Even if they're like an out of, out of building contractor?
I mean, we.
You know, I'm not, I, I, I'm not sure how the training, the staff requirements apply to the coaches who just are employed with us to coach. So I don't, I don't want to shoot from the hip on that, but I'm happy to find out. I can ask Sharon. I assume that they get the bulk of those that are, that relate to them. And they work with children. I mean, we have a pretty, I think, consistent practice around employees who work with children. But let me, let me nail it, run it all the way to ground, Julia, and I'll be happy to circle back with the committee by email on that.
Great, thank you.
And I would say the, an unofficial response would be like Diallo's been great to work with. And so, you know, he's definitely open to us going to like the quarterly meetings. Or I guess it's every three seasons. So that, that this, this season, seasonal meetings for the coaches throughout the year to just talk to them in general about this. And then I went to one a couple of years ago and was able to ask them if they wanted follow-up information, was able to follow up with them, provided them though that, the mental health information at their, at their annual meeting. So, so the athletics department's been super open to this.
I'm so glad to hear that.
Rita, I think you're on mute. I was, sorry. So are there any other comments or questions? So I think so far we've only identified two potential areas for slight revision. One is to look at the, just the terminology of the district components that's going to be in charge of this. And then the other is potentially adding language so that this would cover contractors who have direct contact with students and potentially coaches. So I think that's, that's all I think I heard in terms of possible revisions. Final words? Going, going on?
Just a sec, sorry. I'd just like to extend my thanks to Amy and Mila both for meeting with the DSC. I know they spent about an hour and a half reaching out with us, spending that time, almost one-on-one with us. It was very meaningful to have us involved finally in policy creation. And I know it was super nice to hear from other students about their experiences as well.
Justin, I think you beat us to it. I think we were probably both going to name how appreciative we were of, of the students on this committee and the board group of participating. Sorry, Mila, I thought you were muted.
No, I just, that's my favorite part of my job is being able to hear directly from students. In order to, for us, adults can create lots of things, but really y'all are the ones that are impacted by what we're creating. So it's always a gift for us, for y'all to have. Y'all are the ones that are impacted by what we're creating. So it's always to give for us for y'all to have donated your time to us. So thank you as well.
Okay, so I think these are very minor. Potential revisions. So. Are are people okay with taking a vote on whether. We are prepared to vote this out of the committee for full board consideration for first reading? Can we take a vote? All in favor? Say yes. Okay, and students, oh, okay, that was, I hear two voices.
Who didn't hear from?
I didn't, I thought, I didn't think I heard you.
Yes.
Your yes, okay, okay. So how about the students?
I guess.
Okay, okay, so if you can get back to us.
Gillian is on the call. At least.
Is she? Did she join us?
I I know we want to honor students, but I would remind us that students have voice but not vote on the committees. So I I it is important that we know that Gillian and Jackson are in support of this policy. So I think we should allow for them to say that. But I also want us to honor that. Sort of boundary we have around who votes for what, which is all just complex and is why we have Liz on speed dial.
Okay, thank you for that reminder. Okay, so so this is going to be going to the full board. If you could get us. Prior to that, any revisions that you have to offer based on the comments you heard today. That would be great. And, okay, I I think we're done here today. And I want to. I I also want to add my thanks for this great work. I think this is a. I I think this is a fantastic policy. It's it's very heartening to know how. How much work has gone into this and how how you've. Really kind of gone above and beyond to make sure that it's responsive to students and it's going to. It's going to be doable and feasible and and effective. And. This is important. So thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz, for. Walking us through this last month.
Seriously, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, great job. We'll circle up on those final last edits and we'll get them back out to the policy, but I'll reach out to you guys tomorrow.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
You.
Thank you.
Everyone.
Thank you.
We are 5:02. So. Before we leap into the next agenda item, I'm going to suggest that we take just a few minutes break. I need to get more tea. Will three minutes do it? Okay, we will meet back here at 5:05. This item on the agenda is. The preservation, maintenance and disposition of district real property. And we have looked at this a couple of times already. Have gone through. Most of the language. I think the the issue at hand today is the language in the preamble. That we wanted to get some input on. On some of the language from especially Native American communities. And I know Danny has been working diligently. To set up meetings with. With representatives of communities of color. And my understanding is that Alana Wilson, who's the advocacy director for the Coalition of Communities of Color. Was planning to be here for today's meeting, but. She ended up sick today, so she's unable to make it. But Danny, can you walk us through some of the language that is suggested here? Is Danny here?
Hi, sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm having some, I'm having some mouse issues. So, yeah, so unfortunately, Alana from the Coalition of Communities of Color couldn't be here. I believe she wanted to top of the board and ask folks to consider just a couple of pieces of information. One, just sort of like what the distinction between like a culturally specific organization. Might look like in in relationship to land and real estate. And then the other consideration was to think about the benefit. Of sale to a culturally specific organization. They had an example that they wanted to share with folks. So I believe. We can probably. I'm going to follow up with Alana and with Marcus and see if they'd like to either sort of provide some written testimony. Or potentially come back at the next meeting. So I'll I'll sort of do that. The other thing is that. For the preamble around, we heard from you that you were interested in sort of having some different language around. The sort of the both acknowledging sort of how how the district sort of happened to be. Sort of landholders and then also a little bit more information acknowledging our relationship with indigenous communities and also. Acknowledgement about sort of looking to see how other jurisdictions have sort of handled this language. So. Today, what we wanted to do was just play for you a short video that just sort of is an opportunity for the board to kind of reflect and think about. The impact that a land acknowledgement can have on people. And so it's a short video. I would love to play it for you, but I think maybe someone else has to do it. And so we'll play that. And then I'll share with you some more information. I think we're missing the sound. We're still not getting the sound.
I'm so sorry.
Before I begin this morning, I'd like to recognize the Algonquin Nation on whose traditional territory we are gathering. We acknowledge them as the past, present and future caretakers of this land.
Wherever I go, on that green earth, I do the Lakota tradition of acknowledging the four directions, the land and the people living there. M'chimaka, as I call Grandma the Earth, the land, I view her as a sacred, you know, living entity. And that's why we acknowledge it in, you know, Lakota thought and philosophy.
As a native person, I'm ready for any kind of confrontation that might come up, or I'm preparing myself to remind people of all those things that they forget about. I was at a meeting in Minneapolis and the room was primarily non-native people. I was in a non-native organization. But this executive director got up and said, okay, we're going to get started. So everybody, you know, was sitting down and getting quiet. And she said, I'd like to get started by acknowledging. The indigenous culture of this, of Minnesota. And I was like, first, I was like, wow. And it just made everything. Like fall away a little bit from me. My guard went down. I was more relaxed. Because by saying that, like, that means she understands something that is just like you can't talk about, right? There's just, it just relaxed me as a minority, as a woman and as a native person. Like it just like. Like pulled away this layer that's always there, you know, it was super cool.
We're at a, we're at a time where. Non-native cultures are understanding the traditions of indigenous peoples for for probably the first time in our histories. So like when I go to New Zealand, the protocol is to acknowledge each other's ancestors and their mountains and their rivers. And and that's such a beautiful tradition. When people are in that space and say, we acknowledge. Who you are, this land, where your people come from, they're saying, we acknowledge your relationship, but we're also creating that relationship. This is a good thing.
The important thing would be that folks would then sit with that. Like, what does it mean that our settlement is occupying this space? And what responsibility do I have considering that legacy to these contemporary things, right? And how do I stop distancing myself from that? Ideally, that would be for me, the impact that this has.
If you start acknowledging that the land that you're standing on and the space that you are in belong to people that are still here. Like make so much more room for understanding of all these other issues. It's one of those little things that like, if it could just tip a little bit. All the like dominoes that could fall from it, I think are important. Now I'm like imagining it and like wanting to live in that like, the thing that I'm imagining like, yeah, that's actually really beautiful.
It's just being a genuine human being to acknowledge each other's histories, the good and the bad.
I'm glad that you guys got a chance to see that. What I really like about that video, not only does it show sort of like a really sort of diversified look at native people. You have an elder, you have these like awesome hipsters, you have just like a really good blend of. Sort of different ways that native folks are represented throughout the country. But the, just like the impact of sort of like what acknowledgement can do and sort of like it's 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 really, it's really powerful. So the suggestion to kind of change the preamble to really acknowledge that, I think, is a really powerful way to kind of signal the district's commitment to racial equity. And certainly our theory of action. So I have been working on sort of trying to understand how other jurisdictions are are attempting to do this. And since our preamble, the the preamble as was written. Does not necessarily acknowledge native folks, nor does it sort of acknowledge dispossession. We did want to try to seek some consultation from folks. And like all things in November and December, the timing is just slightly off. The city of Portland and working with Lord John, who's the tribal liaison for the city of Portland and their Office of Government Relations. They are, the city of Portland is drafting a resolution that sort of gets at sort of like some draft language. That takes into account sort of the the dispossession and has some like common language around dispossession. As well as references to other policies that sort of get us to how we're sort of at, how we're situated now in terms of land ownership and in in public entities. So they're scheduled to have that resolution, I believe, in middle of December. And they'll be sending out some draft language to a group of reviewers for us to take a look at that. And so what I propose is that we sort of. Take a look at changing the language in the preamble to have a first. First paragraph that would sort of do more of a land acknowledgement that sort of acknowledges the land that we're on, similar to what we've seen in in our, some of our other land acknowledgements. And then a transition paragraph that talks a little bit about disposition and the different federal policies that got us to how PPS owns. Property in the city of Portland. And then with the lens of sort of indigenous history and then. The sort of like getting back up into the, starting back up with the language around the responsibility of the board as sort of stewards of the of the property and assets. So if you don't mind. So if you don't mind, we'd like to just pause a little bit and get that language, get that out, back out to you once we have it and then have your sort of review. And then I think what Laura told me was that there's quite a bit of alignment between a lot of cities, not just the city of Portland, but also cities in Hillsborough. I think city of Hillsborough, Beaverton, some philanthropic organizations, the Portugal Demand Foundation. So we'll, we'll have some nice alignment so that we're, we're in good company.
And could we also get the questions or comments from the coalition ahead of time so that we have a chance to read and look it over?
Yeah, I think, I think so. I, I, I don't know if they'll, if Alana will have prepared testimony or she'll, she'll come with that. But if she does have prepared or can ask to see it first.
So I, I understand that, you know, there's a lot going on for everybody. And there is some, some level of urgency to get this, to kind of nail down some specific language for this policy. So I'm going to ask for your best guess. When, when do you think we might, when do you think you might get some language from the city? And what degree of confidence do you have in that date, whatever it is?
Well, as I understand, the time certain is on December 17th. So I'm anticipating language from the city, you know, within today or certainly within this week. And I can turn that around to folks as, you know, as soon as I get it. So I think because of their time certain, we actually have some certainty.
Okay, so, um, I'm going to look at the calendar now. And I'm going to ask Roseanne to help here. So I think our next policy committee meeting is January 4th, I think. And that is just shy of a month off, but we've got a break in between. So, and we would like to get, I mean, we'd, we'd like to, can you, do you have handy the, the work plan that we came up with? And what is the desired date for this to go before board for a first reading?
Let me look.
I think it's January 12th is the current updated forecast. So that we come back to this committee on the 4th, which is the next committee meeting. And then go to a first reading, hopefully on the January 12th regular board meeting. Okay, so, um, so how about we hope that Danny gets the language? And if, if you could send it out to committee members as soon as you get it, Danny, so that we can kind of look at it ahead of time before the next meeting. And if, you know, when people get it, if you could take a look at it in any, to the extent that we can do some wordsmithing offline prior to meeting i- in the committee, I think that will facilitate the processing. So I think at this point, unless there are objections, I'm going to sort of suspend this agenda item until the next meeting, when we will consider changes to the preamble. And at that point, any other language changes that, that we want to consider. There's been, there have been some revisions to the, to the policy language throughout based on our previous comments. So I think if we suspend it today and then at the next meeting, we devote some time to both the preamble and then working through any other language issues for the rest of the policy. And then we might be able to, we might actually be able to get it to a full board for consideration. The, what, second week in January or something like that? Okay, any objections?
Well, I don't have an objection. I have just an issue I want to raise. So we last summer had an inquiry or a request from Kairos about below, below market rents and also a option to sell. And I understand there's, they're two different, they're, they're two separate, although complimentary items. But on the first, at this point, we're like almost halfway through the school year. And I'm wondering if, it doesn't seem that the criteria on the, on the rent is, has been an issue in the committee, whether we might be able to, as a board, and this is a question more for Ailey and Scott, be able to move ahead on that particular question versus waiting for the next meeting and then potentially the board meeting after that, which would probably be in January for a first reading, then the public comment period and everything else. Because the school year will be probably three quarters the way through. So I say, it doesn't seem like the committee, we've had an issue. There's been a big issue about the criteria around the rent and more the issues are more about the permanent, just permanent disposition of property. So I'm wondering if we could continue to move the policy forward, but move ahead and respond to the requests we've had, at least on the rent.
I want to defer to Liz on this because I think one of the things we've been trying to hold intention is being responsive to our partners and also making sure we have clear, you know, the part of the purpose for working on this policy was to make sure we had clear criteria for our decision-making. So I, my understanding is we need to finish this policy and have it approved before we respond to any of those partners. But Liz, did you have a, a different thought or a path forward there?
I'd like to respond to the committee members in writing about the pros and cons of each path. I think that's the appropriate step on my part.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, thank you, Danny, for all your work on this. I know it's difficult to track these kinds of things down. So we're looking forward to getting some, some suggestions from our partner agencies. And hopefully we can work through the language relatively quickly after that. Okay, thank you. So, but don't go away because I think you're next up for the next policy as well, which is All Students Belong. And so I think Danny and Mary are taking the lead on this one. And this is, we have renamed tentatively to the anti-racist learning communities. So if you could, who's going to talk to, talk us through this?
I think I'll kick us off and then we can kind of go from there. So you are correct, I get to work with the fabulous Mary Kane. And since we last met, we met with the students from Publius United, who are very interested in this policy in particular. They met with myself and Shanice Clark, who's our Director of Community Engagement, earlier in the year to talk about some of their ideas around racial equity and anti-hate speech. And then we're very interested in this policy in particular. And I believe that you also had the opportunity to hear some of their testimony. So what we did is we continued to sort of try to point out like what would be sort of handled in the administrative directive, as well as sort of like what would be in the policy. And a lot of what the student feedback was, were more tactical issues that would be handled in the administrative directive. So they, they talked a lot about sort of like the logistics of, like, you know, for example, like restorative justice. They talked about sort of like interactions with like principals and, and, and teachers and students. And gave us just a lot of really, really good feedback, both from their lived experience and, and certain incidents. And, you know, seemed to be really connected, not only to their homeschool communities, but throughout the district. So it was a really good meeting. Ultimately, a lot of their feedback will inform the administrative directive. I believe that they were, you know, if I were to characterize, I think that they were in support of the, of the policy in general. And we're excited to see the district taking some comprehensive look at that. I think, for example, you know, one of the things that they wanted to see more consistency in was in sort of like the reporting and also the sort of like uniform responses. So I think that the policy does a nice, you know, elegant, if you will, way of sort of like meeting their needs while also we can kind of continue to engage with them around the administrative directive to make sure that some of the sort of ways that this gets implemented also meet some of the feedback that they gave. So I believe that the, the other question is that, I think the, the big thing was that when we talk about restorative justice and discipline, a lot of the conversation that we had is that we wanted to make sure that we weren't sort of setting up like discipline and restorative justice, but that we were sort of like acknowledging that there are consequences and that we have a restorative justice approach at the district. And that, that, and that through that approach, different consequences can occur. So we, we had pretty robust discussion about that. And then I think there were a couple of places where we wanted to just kind of continue the volts for the AD. Mary, am I missing anything? I feel like.
I think that's right. I think the, the concern was in articulating what the, you know, and I think this again moves more to the administrative directive and the procedural piece of what, what the path of discipline, what the path of restorative justice looks like. And sometimes it can be both, right? You can, you can have both, but you know, the, the incident is of a level of seriousness that will also lead to more formal consequences. The other thing that they were interested in and they, what we talked about, I don't know that it should be in here, but the having, being able to articulate more clearly that there are times and there are, and when we may not be able to provide information on what has, you know, what the consequences were for the student or students involved because of furbit issues or others. And, and what they want, and what they were interested in is making sure that that information is known at the front end as opposed to, and that, you know, when an incident has occurred and it feels like an excuse, as opposed to having a better understanding of what we are able to provide and what we want to provide in terms of information going forward and what we are prohibited from doing. The other, the only other thing that we still really need to discuss, and I think the students and Director Bailey were interested in the same thing about clarifying the learning opportunities to support the goals of the, of the policy. And we were planning to reach out, you know, there are, there, there is some legislation that requires it. I don't know the extent of it and my hope had been to reach out to, you know, somebody from Office of Teaching Learning to, to help answer those questions. I don't, I don't have that today, but I, I don't know if that, if you need that for purposes of adding that language into the policy or is just additional information for you to know as we're moving forward.
Yeah, and I guess I would, I would also just add on, I, you know, we listened and heard some of the board feedback about the name and sort of like the questioning of sort of like, why would it be called an anti-racist policy? And I, I would have to say, you know, my first reaction is that this questioning feels a little bit like we're taking a step backwards from some of the work that we've been doing around our racial equity work. I think that, you know, if we were to look at a Venn diagram, I think that the, the work of anti-racism encompasses the work around antisemitism, the work around misogyny. And to, to sort of, to, to sort of try to find the perfect term, that sort of, that doesn't, that doesn't include anti-racism feels like we are, we're really not honoring where we are in terms of our racial, our commitment to racial equity and the work around our theory of action. What, what I will say is that there are, you know, quite a few, you know, groups that are civil rights groups that acknowledge the sort of, if you will, the primacy of the work around anti-racism, the work around sort of addressing race as an important place to begin because of how deeply entrenched it is, not only in the culture, but in our systems. And so the, like, the, the work of anti-racism really sets us up well to contend with other, other sort of forms of oppression. And, you know, we're, we're a critical race district. We are critical race theory district, which, you know, sort of talks about this like permanence of racism. And unless we can really sort of live into that targeted universalism where we're taking, where our system is really sort of hindered by the pernicious history of racism, we weren't, we aren't able to, and if we're, we're not able to acknowledge that first, then we aren't able to sort of build the requisite muscles to attack other oppressions. I think it's.
Well, go ahead.
I think that, you know, the, the, you know, and sort of looking at, you know, different, both Shanice and I sort of have, you know, been looking at different sort of research and different things because I think clearly, you know, as women of color, as an indigenous person, as a woman of color, you know, there is, you know, I think there is privilege in sort of talking about how, you know, sort of, I guess, I guess what I would say is that there, there are both, you know, in the Anti-Defamation League, in the Southern Poverty Law Center, in other pieces, other sort of groups that are represented in this, this group that all embrace anti-racism and embrace our work around race equity and the Black Lives Matter movement. And so I would just, I would strongly encourage the board to, to kind of continue to embrace this path that we're on and to, to really caution against the sort of like duality of like, if you say anti-racism, then you're not, then, then where's my, where's my thing? But really to sort of like embrace anti-racism as the work that we do, the foundational work that allows us to build the muscles to attack all of the, the different oppressions. You know, I stand by, I stand by that like, if we, I guarantee that if we sort of lead with anti-racism, that the white nationalist movement, the sort of, the work there, they, they are not happy with that. And that, that really is, gets to the heart of sort of what their movement is about, so.
Well, do you want to speak briefly to the glossary at all, Danny? Or do you want me to, to?
Yeah, I think, I think we wanted to, so we were trying to find a way to add some more language to this glossary. I think originally because we didn't directly sort of create that like, sort of terminology list because it wasn't all directly correlated in the policy, but more in the, the, in the, in the administrative directive. I think we want to kind of go back and sort of talk about anti-racism and it's for sort of like more expansive. And then also include like targeted universalism and give just a little bit of context about sort of like why the district has chosen. I think it's, you know, candidly, I think this conversation is comparable to the conversation that we had about sort of like, why are we racial equity and not just equity? I think it's, it speaks to sort of where we, where we want to be at, sort of at the forefront of really sort of tackling the thing that never gets tackled.
And so the intention of the glossary was just to show you what, you know, that, what all we believe it encompasses. And we're adding to that and the students had a lot of input in this. of input in this piece of it. And it wouldn't necessarily be even part of the administrative directive. It'd be a hyperlink, hyperlinking from the policy and the administrative directive, but 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 available in multiple places, so that there is a deeper understanding of when you're talking about some things, microaggressions, or, you know, that that people have a common understanding of what it is we're talking about when we're talking about this. So that was the idea behind it.
And can I jump in one sec to ask a question about that?
Sure.
For the glossary of terms, could we add something about what restorative justice is or looks like in the context of this?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think I think we also wanted to kind of draw some links between this AD, the Student Conduct AD, and make sure that there's that there's like some consistency there.
And a little bit of a follow-up question. Is restorative justice always to be used, or is it taken into consideration?
Well, I think that the it's a it's a different, so so when we talk about restorative justice, I think most people say that this is like an alternative to traditional to traditional discipline, right? So instead of getting suspension, you're getting something else. I think what we're really trying to do is to sort of frame restorative justice as an approach. So there are still consequences. It's just sort of taking a look at consequences with a wider frame, with a concern for the whole community, and wanting to sort of like find more proactive solutions to actually change. I think that's what we're we're trying to do. So I think your suggestion of going around defining what the approach is is really important.
I also have something to say. I do appreciate y'all's work with restorative justice, but I personally, in my experience, it's really not been effective, and it's just hurt more than it's helped. And I'm aware that that might just be me personally, but even with the people I've talked to, that's how it's ended up. So please, like, moving forward, make sure that you are thinking about both ways that it could go. Like, if it really is going to cause more harm than it is going to cause help, because especially in racism, I don't see how necessarily that could help. And in my case, it was with sexual assault, and it definitely didn't help.
Thank you for sharing that, Jillian. That's really important. And 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 I think we would love to talk to you more about that. We're, we we heard that as well from some of the other students, the the concern about making sure that we have a robust and consistent approach, and that there have, at least, well, Dani and I, there have been some fails. And so we want to understand better how we failed and how how we can do better.
Yeah, I think it's that's, I, you know, Jillian, thank you for bringing that up. I think that's like a classic example of sort of like, the approach might be restorative, but that doesn't mean that the consequences are not without, that consequence, that that consequences for behaviors aren't without appropriate, that that they aren't appropriate. And so I think this is work that we need to do as a district and sort of doing, I think the, I think the shorthand understanding is like, restorative justice is somehow lighter. But actually, with fidelity, if we have a restorative justice and a restorative practices approach, the importance of relationships, the understanding of harm that gets done, and the the consequences, and the way that folks are expected to take responsibility for that harm is is quite different than the way that it might be currently being implemented. So we we really need to kind of grow and learn as a district as we continue in that.
Yeah, the point I guess I wanted to call out, and I think Jillian was trying to get at, was typically restorative justice, as I've seen, is a dialogue between the victim of that hate incidence, along with the perpetrator. And I think sometimes, not always, that interaction can be even more harmful than the original act itself.
And we heard that, and we're hearing that again today. We also heard that sometimes the harm is broader than just the two, and that that's not been taken into consideration. That is, you know, that the the harm is to the entire community. And and so we have to do some work on that.
So can I get, I think I I need a little clarification on where where we think we stand with this language. How are you, because I I think I'm hearing some concerns about the need to, like, define more more clearly what we mean by a restorative justice approach. So I'm a little, I'm a little unclear kind of where we are in the process.
I think our, I think our recommendation, I I think, at least, my recommendation is that we is that we sort of make reference to restorative justice, and we provide the link to the Student Conduct and Discipline AD, where sort of like those sort of sets of consequences are are there so that folks can see that sort of like that that there. I think I don't think that in this AD, we want to define discipline, conduct, or restorative justice, or or sort of lay out what that should be. I think we want to make reference to it and to define it, but not necessarily sort of start to assign consequences for that. I think that
It's so, it's so fact-specific. And, you know, I mean, and we have already the the Student Handbook that kind of lays out what what behaviors lead to, you know, the the continuum of consequences.
Yeah, I I mean, I I'm, I'm not arguing for more specificity about, you know, what what particular consequences would be involved. But I think we need, I think the language around restorative justice needs to be probably somewhat more prominent and and a bit more fulsome.
Okay.
So, so currently, the the second component of this policy is definitions. And I guess I'm wondering if that's the best place for them?
And for restorative justice?
No, for, well, so you got, you've got a preamble, the purpose, and then definitions, and then expectations and consequences.
Do you like us to move definitions to the end? We've done that in another, can't remember which other policy we.
Were we going to offload definitions because many of them seem to be changing rapidly?
We offloaded most of them to the glossaries. The the ones that remained are Bias Incident, Symbol of Hate, and Hate Speech.
And one of the reasons they remain is that they are defined in the ODE rule about an All Students Belong policy.
Okay, I'm sorry. What does that mean, Liz?
So the ODE rule is defining, the ODE rule says you have to have, the district test has a have a policy, and these are what the terms mean in defining that policy. So it, I think there are probably ways, if they were defined someplace else, to reference them, but they are, those are particularly tied to the OAR.
Yeah.
So the the three of them, Bias, Bias Incident, Symbol of Hate, and Hate Speech?
Actually
Actually, just two, just bias of incident, Bias Incident and Symbol of Hate. Sorry. I'm looking at the rule right now.
We 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 included Hate Speech as
Okay. And I think the Hate Speech is an important reference here in order to provide cohesion in some of the work that Dani has done and and others in the district as well, to respond to Hate Speech incidents. And so to marry the ODE requirement with the structure and language of the work that's been done, I think that I think that language bridges it. Dani, I want to speak on your behalf, because you are the expert, but that's a linkage I see by adding that language to this policy.
Exactly.
So so my thought was, and now that I know this is taken directly from the statute, I don't know. I may change my mind, but anyway. So what I was thinking was, this might, so especially in number two, we talk about A and B, reasonably likely to cause a substantial disruption of school activities, reasonably likely to interfere with the rights of students. That might be a place where you could insert some language from restorative justice that frames harm, not just in terms of an individual, but the collective. That might be a way to sort of link the two sections, you know, between the definitions and the expectations and consequences, where you talk about using restorative justice approach. Does that make sense?
Yes, we'll work on that.
Okay. Okay, and so I was a little unclear. So at the end, there's the glossary of terms?
Right.
That's
That's not, that was just for your edification, but that's not to be part of the policy.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
I have a number. And I guess I'm going to start with the one that just came up, the glossary. I don't understand that that's not going to be part of the policy?
There'll be a hyperlink at the bottom, but it's not part of the policy.
At the end of the policy, it's not what the board is voting on. I think that work is still under way, Julia, and I think it's, we want people to be able to access it who are looking at this material, but it isn't necessarily part of the board policy.
So in effect, the policy would end at found here, the sentence before that?
End of policy.
It 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 wouldn't have the sentence that says a glossary of definitions, but that's behavior?
No, it should not.
Okay, so that's not part of the policy?
No.
You see, Julia, where it says end of policy, it's on three. There's a Roman numeral three that says expectations and consequences. And then at the end of that, the last sentence is nothing in this policy is intended to interfere with the lawful use of district facilities pursuant to a lease or sense.
License.
License. Oh, yeah. Okay, I need better glasses. And there's something on my screen. And then it says end of policy after that.
Okay, that just seemed like a random set of words there. I didn't realize that was the end of the policy, because normally you have like references. So thank you. So both of those sentences are then not part of the policy. So I have some like, just, well, first, Dani, thank you for sharing your perspective about the title. And I think it would be good somehow to think about how to capture what you said as part of either the administrative directors or capture, because I think it'll be a question that a lot of people ask. And I thought your explanation will be helpful for people of why doesn't it say X? So I would just encourage us to also make this an opportunity to further further advance our work. Then on the one, two, three, four, the fifth and the sixth paragraph under the purpose, I would be, the the language that stands now, I think, is good, but I also think it's like, it's more than being free from discrimination, but that we have a culture that actually is anti-racist. Because free from discrimination almost seems like, hey, well, like, we're tolerant versus like, we're actively trying to create an environment. It just, free seems passive. It's okay, but it seems like we also would want to have some, for both of those, something that also indicates that there's action behind it. And then, and I brought this up last time, and I'm still not quite sure what to do with it. But on number two, you know, I was just looking again today through the Hate on Display Hate Symbols database. And if you just go scroll through the first couple of pages, numbers like thirteen, fourteen, eighteen, twenty-eight, thirty-eight, and forty-three are all listed as hate symbols. And it's like, who knew? I mean, and I'm just thinking, like, for example, we have all these sports jerseys that have include those numbers. And, you know, how, again, there's a lot of information in this database. But how are how are students specifically going to, how are we going to build awareness? And then are we going to say, for example, hey, it's okay to have, you know, thirteen on a jersey? And that's not a hate symbol. And when the policy, when you link to it, it says this is a hate symbol. So I just think we have more work to do. And then also, the intentionality of, I think most people, they use the word, the numbers forty-three, don't believe they're expressing some sort of hate speech. And so how do we distinguish between, hey, that was intentional hate speech, or or unintentional or even unaware? And I'm just using part of the most extreme example here, just like of a number and how that gets played out. Because I think it could, I just, I'm trying to understand how we'd enforce the policy and who who and what on that list, how we actually would navigate that in an environment in which some of these things are common, either number sequences or things like a hundred percent is another another one is like, is that when if you say a hundred percent, which is commonly used, but not in the sense of as a racist statement? So how do we, is it all intent? And who judges intent? And then how do we also educate students?
I I think, you know, one of the things about this is that ways to express hate continuously evolves, right? And so there's new symbols, there's new language, there's new sort of coded ways. And so, you know, we're always gonna be missing. You know, and I think, you know, if a student chooses a thirteen for their basketball jersey, or that's the number they get, or, you know, I'm forty-three this year. I do think we end up with intent. And if it's graffiti, you know, that's different than a basketball jersey. But if we, you know, I think it's having adults be be trained and be proactive and be learning about these things and and having kids as well. I I don't want us to set up like a sort of strong man argument that we can't limit these things because, you know, the innocent kid who just likes the number thirteen is going to get in trouble. I think we want to be really clear that there is a level of like, intent that is, like, is there is a judgment made about it?
When Yeah, just to clarify, I'm not all, I'm not all arguing, Ellie, that that we speak that out. I'm just trying to think about like, how how it gets interpreted and how and how actually how we educate people. It's not that I'm saying we shouldn't put that in. I'm just trying to think about how to effectively, so it's not just, hey, we passed our policy, but actually make it meaningful.
Right. And I think that's some of what we talked about with the suicide prevention policy is how do we actually hold ourselves accountable to this, that we are going to be responsive to hate speech and and understand that hate speech evolves. And I'm, I'm thinking about an incident in a high school yearbook where kids where kids made a hand gesture that none of the adults who were looking at the photographs and like proofing it, and a lot of the kids didn't know meant something, and then, you know, the yearbook's published and all of a sudden it's pointed out that this is what this means, and it's horrifying. So it's how do we, how do we have things in place where we're learning, but also we're holding kids accountable and staff accountable, one another accountable, to, to be anti-racist, and I think it's an evolution. Danny, do you have some thoughts there?
Yeah, so I think, you know, similar to what you heard about the, about the Addy's Law policy, I think a lot of what we want to try to do with protocols and with the, with the AD and the toolkit is to give administrators and educators the tools so that they can sort of recognize not just the symbols in the database, but also the sort of like tactics that folks are using online to sort of like lure children into this and to kind of get that. So I, so I think that some of the, the, I think what I'm hearing about some of the larger questions about sort of understanding intent, we can provide, you know, in our toolkit to be able to, we can provide some more information in our toolkit so that, that, that sort of like estimation of what intent might be becomes a little bit more certain. We can sort of like also tie it down to patterns. So with the administrative directive, we'll have some more requirements for centralized reporting of these incidents, in which case then we can track and then also kind of report back out to folks to, to talk about patterns that we're seeing centrally. So that if the number forty-three is, you know, was yesterday was pretty innocent, and then we have, you know, four, four uses of the number forty-three along with other symbols, then we know to sort of, to then sort of like turn on and sort of be aware of that. I think the intent in sort of putting the database in the policy is to sort of like give folks sort of like, oh, that'll worry me, like a a heads up that in addition to the three symbols that were identified, that there is, that there is a sort of national database that is helping us sort of try to understand that sort of pattern of, of the way that folks are sort of using symbols for, for, you know, for bad purposes. So I think
Yeah.
A lot of it can be, a lot of what I'm hearing, your maybe some, some sort of second thoughts about, I think could be accomplished in the ED and in the resulting toolkit.
We're also, and had started discussions with, again, like with Addy's Act, with peer-to-peer, you know, to talk, to help with, you know, the, that recruitment that starts online in ways that I think the adults are always behind, you know, and, and so empowering students to help us get in front of it would be fantastic. I don't know what that looks like, but that's hopefully that, you know, we will have a lot of input from students about what they believe would be really proactive approaches.
Maybe there's just like an additional, a couple additional sentences that just talks about how it's ever, ever evolving and maybe something about intent. I don't have any second thoughts at all about the database. I'm just also wanting our, the policy to be, and it sounds like combined with the protocols and the AD, which I haven't seen, so I don't have that, sort of what the whole thing looks like, but just to acknowledge that we're going to need to be sort of lean into, into this work, because it's, I think, it's not necessarily intuitive to to everybody, nor is everybody aware of even that there is a database or that things evolve, and so again, no second thought, but just more how do we help? How do we help people comply and embrace what we're trying to do here?
Okay, we're, we're pretty significantly over time. Any other specific questions? Okay, I'm going to ask that Danny and Mary work on some language to respond to the questions that we got today. Does somebody else want to say something? Okay, so can you come back at the next meeting with some responsive language, and then we'll, we'll take it from there?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, and so we still have two items left to talk about on today's agenda. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask a question. So the next item is the policy updates to the Title IX policy that are intended to respond to both state and federal regulatory changes.
So Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna make a suggestion that my understanding is that this has become endlessly complicated. And you're probably not in a position today to, to really give us a definitive suggestions for revision yet.
What, what we brought today were some very discrete components that I think are easily moved to the next meeting in order to give ample time for the climate crisis response policy, and I suggest that you do that. Yes, there is complex work on the other pieces that are not as discrete, and there are much hairier that is still going on, so yes.
Okay, so let's, let's suspend this for today and put it back on the agenda for next time, at which point we may or may not have more substantive revisions to consider.
Perhaps not on the professional conduct policy, but we'll have other, I think we'll have other policy revisions for you.
Okay, I want to, I want to caution that there, there are, we are in control of part of the timeline, but not all of it, given multiple people providing input, and we are, we are we are doing some wholesale, a new, a new approach to how to make these policies accessible to the students and broader community who need to access them, and parents and teachers. And so we're in effect starting over with some of the other, not the ones that were on the agenda today. So we will definitely have an update by the January four meeting, but with the holiday smack dab, people taking some time off at the end of December, I don't want to, I feel reluctant to promise revised policies by January four. We will do our best. Certainly the meeting after that, but it's, it's not an easy task.
Not, and may not is always a possibility.
Okay, I just wanted, in full transparency to the committee about where we are.
Okay. All right, so, so let's stop here, take another few minutes break, and then reconvene, three minutes, okay? We'll reconvene at six-ten to start a preliminary discussion on the climate policy. Be back here in three minutes. Climate Crisis Response Policy, and and I wanna, this is the, really the first time we've had a chance to talk about this policy in any depth. So since this is the preliminary discussion, I would, I'd sort of like to frame this up as by the end of this session, I'm hoping that we will have gotten some, some information in what data and information we have available about what PPS is currently doing, little bit about kinds of resources we have available to bring to bear on this, on this policy. And then ultimately have, by the end of the meeting, some assignments for staff, some requests for the, the data, information, and recommendations that they can bring to us to inform how we, how we approach this policy. So that's kind of, I, I don't think we're going to be in a position to talk about language, specific language about the policy today. It's more like a kind of framing up the issue. So I'm going to ask, so I think for staff, we have Dan Young and Sarah Davis here, who can speak to this. We also have several people who have been working on this issue. So Mike Rosen, Aaron Pressburg, Amy Higgs and Jane Kamalt. So if we can add them to the panelists in case they want to contribute to this decision. So we have before us a policy draft that is very ambitious, it's very thorough, and enormous amount of work has gone into this. So I want to thank the students and the teachers and community members who have worked on developing this draft for, for many, many months. And there has been some coordination or some contact between the originators of this policy draft and PPS staff. I think we need to sort of deepen the understanding from PPS staff about kind of the implications of this policy and, and what kind of resources we have available to us or that we need to develop in order to be responsive, so. I guess, Dan and Sarah, I think, do you want to lead us off on this?
Yeah, I can go ahead and start if that works for you, Sarah. So I'll give a little, a high-level overview. So the, the draft policy that you have for you, the, I think it's the Climate Crisis Response Committee, I lose their name, worked on this draft and provided different versions of it and different information to staff for several months, and, and over the summer provided one version that staff took and did some analysis and responded back to, and that's one of the documents that's in your packet there, that's called the crosswalk. It has some detailed information. From a high level, certainly staff agrees with the objective of reducing carbon. We, the district, staff-wise, we already have goals around reducing carbon, around energy and sustainability goals and targets that we have, and so we have quite a few strategies and tasks underway, and I think what, what this policy will do is help build momentum behind that. We certainly have information about what our carbon emissions are now, at least at a high level. And certainly we have lots of information about the efforts that we have in place at the moment, so at kind of a high level, that's where we are at the moment. Specific to some of the, the recommendations in the draft policy, some of them are things that are already underway. Some of them are things that we certainly endeavor to do. All of them seem like good suggestions. We'll say that some of them may be harder to implement than others, and some may have more return on investment than others, where some are seemingly doable, and we'll see a, a high level of return on that investment. For others, it, it might not have as much return as far as carbon emissions, so. From a high level, I think that's a bit of an overview from the operations side. I'll let Sarah add anything that she would like.
Yeah, and I would mirror what Dan is saying. On the, the curriculum and school engagement side, it, it continues from the work that we've collaboratively started with the, with students and schools and across the departments and with the Climate Justice Committee. And so at, at a high level, most definitely, things, things, you know, some things are underway. Some things would be extensions of what, what we're doing, but definite resonance across the Office of Teaching and Learning as well, that these are very important topics and, and, and really deserved deep thought.
Okay. So I want to invite board members, do you have?
But I do think it would be helpful if we could get some policy models from other, other school districts and maybe other jurisdictions as well. Any other questions?
I suspect that we're gonna be wanting to be ahead of the curve from a lot of what's out there. I think we want to be more than aspirational. Flower-y statement, I think we need some pretty targeted goals. And this part of what's in this, the draft gets us there. Some of it, I think, is too specific and, and belongs more in a, in a AD or a plan. But I, I think the, the framework is useful in terms of some specific areas that we can make statements about, kind of directing staff work. I do think there are times when some of the things suggested are above and beyond what we are as a school district in terms of our mission, particularly in some of the community education work. I, I do like references to student engagement in this work on the, on the operational side as well as within the curriculum per se. And that's a fruitful area for us to look and look at. So that, that's kind of, you know, not, not, not getting to wordsmithing, but in terms of, of general direction. I think we, we can incorporate this framework into sort of our more traditional policy framework and make it work. I just want kudos to our, our allies out there and kudos to staff. I really appreciate the, the spreadsheet. They had green, yellow, red was, was really helpful. And, and I, I just, I think we can do more and have some really good partnerships with the community that will drive down our, our carbon usage, increase our use of renewables. And so I'm, I'm all for, I think the targeting will help us do that. We know there are state matching funds for doing some of this work that we haven't been taking full advantage of. That's a conversation I've, I've had with staff for a couple of years now. So I'd like to see us get over the hump and, and get that going. It's, it, it'll pay for itself and then some.
So I have just some overarching comments. Well, maybe some of the language needs to be reformatted to like be more fit with the rest of our policies. I think this is a really great, concrete policy that is, it doesn't, in many cases, doesn't say how, just sets targets, which is, it's more the what, what we want to be doing in like the key areas. And I look at PPS as, you know, one, probably the second largest landowner in the city. We often, every, every morning have, you know, normally have 50,000 students being transported often in cars or sort of dirty buses. That PPS in many ways, I think contributes, you know, contributes to the climate crisis. And I think there are many things in here that provides some real tangible ways in which we can get after, get after being a leader versus a follower. And I want to applaud staff. I think if you look at, when I look at the crosswalk, there already are many things that have been implemented. And so check, we're on our way on many things. But there's others that whether they may need, you know, leadership support or needs dedicated staff, that those are all things that I think with, with focus and, and support and, and leadership from our students, that they seem doable. So I, I think we should press ahead. And I, I, I'm with Scott, I don't think we should be aspirational. There's some very tangible things we can, we can do in the policy. I think as long as it doesn't tell, say specifically how we do things, but more the, the what we're aiming for in, in different areas, I think would give us a, I say, play a leadership role in a, in an area in which our students and staff want us to and the board.
Sorry. Any other general comments? What kinds of information would you, would you like to have in order to be able to kind of inform our discussion of, of this policy?
I think a brief review from staff of here's what we're doing now. And if they have a sense of where the, which cliche do I want to use, low hanging fruit, biggest bang for the buck? What, what would, you know, where we would go for next steps to really start to impact our practices?
And just to build on that, because it seems like the low hanging fruit is actually stuff we've already implemented. So, and then, then there's a second, you know, the second layer, second tier of low hanging fruit. I mean, I would be in, and maybe it's the, the, going through the, just step by step of the crosswalk to the policy to see like, say on, like the first one, how, how many of the first five do we already have in process? Or, you know, it, it could easily be achievable. And so we start seeing, you know, where the delta is between a, having a comprehensive climate policy and where we currently are. So that, that would be, that would be one thing. And I guess the other thing from staff is, and this is, this is more a drafting issue is like, you know, how to make it mirror the policy format that we, we currently use.
Julie, you want that in the first round of information or as something to put a pin in until we get further along?
Which is an answer to the general question. Because I think sometimes it's hard to look at something when it's not in the format we're normally used to. For example, I mean, this just, instead of like having the word target and then maximize reductions, blah, 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 like you drop the word target. Because you're just, we're making a, a statement of what we want to do with JHD emissions. So it's more ease of having people think of it as in terms of a policy. But certainly not the most important.
Well, I, it was an honest question, just to understand what information is helpful to the committee? Because I know there's a lot here. So this is a really helpful conversation to have you tell us what staff can provide as we work, work through this.
I guess it's kind of splitting the difference of, I don't, I don't think a reference to plastic forks belongs in policy. But what is, what is the language that gets us to a plan and AD that addresses? I mean, again, if that's, we have to look at cost effectiveness and what actually moves the meat, the needle on our carbon usage. I don't know if plastic forks is one of those things or not. But that is an example. We, we, we wouldn't want something that's specific in the policy, but we would certainly want the policy to be more like, yeah, well, maybe we ought to do something about plastic. It, it should drive some change in that, in, in that area. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it could be that the district no longer utilizes like disposable or, you know, I mean, without saying forks, but have a class of things that are disposable that contribute to climate change, for, for example. Like up-level it one piece or have a larger class versus naming the individual things within the, the class to that specific.
Okay, forks, get them out. But the, the, the challenge here is that this is a huge systems issue, a lot of which is beyond our control, a lot of which we can't change the system. I mean, transportation is, is a big thing. Switching to a natural gas bus really doesn't cut the mustard. How much is all electric? Probably a pretty big investment. I don't know. So it, it's, it's weighing what, you know, what's feasibly within our control that doesn't kill us budget-wise. I mean, we, we just have to look at that. Because we're, we're in a pretty warped system right now. And then that's gonna, it's gonna prevent us doing a lot of things or make it extremely hard to do a lot of things. Whereas some, some things are much more in our control and we have a much easier path ahead to implement them and to, and they can be a substantial impact on our carbon usage, our generation.
So building on that, I think it would be helpful, I would like to see staff, I guess, identify that, you know, what's within our direct scope of control? And where are we dependent on other systems? And where are we dependent, where are we limited by external actors? Like my understanding is that a lot of what we do in nutrition services is driven by the, by the feds. So what are, what are those limitations? And what could we do? And it doesn't have to be, you know, as detailed as plastic forks, but like what, generally speaking, what are the parameters within which we have to work to make this doable? And, and things like transportation? I think we're mostly dependent on a contractor. So like, where's our, how can we maneuver within limitations? Where, where are the parameters? That would be helpful for staff to try to tease out a little bit. And my understanding, so I had a brief conversation with Dan and Aaron. And my understanding is that we do have some data, but there is also a lot of data that we don't have. So that some work would be required in order to establish baseline levels that, that we would really need in order to, you know, establish goals and accountability and all that. So it would be helpful if staff could articulate how, how much work would be necessary in order to establish baselines? And what that would mean in terms of, you know, goal setting and timeline and all that? Have I faithfully represented what you told me?
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in real quick. We, we have some good data and we can share that data certainly for the next meeting on what some of our biggest carbon emitters are, building usage and electricity and, and natural gas and in our transportation. And, and really depending on the granularity of the committee of where we set those goals and those specific targets, the information we, we have now might be sufficient to, to have a good policy. But certainly when we get to that more granular detail, whether that be an LCO or the ADs down the line or, or some other document that clarifies exactly what, what targets we want to go after, we will need to do some additional research on that, on baseline. So we do know that's going to be a part of it. The question is, do we need it before we can finalize the policy? Or is it something that can come after? And, and I'll stop there and let Aaron jump in if I said anything that didn't accurate.
Yeah, Dan, you pretty much covered it. So we have really accurate data in some cases. But for instance, for waste, you know, we have some limited waste data, but we don't know what that conversion is exactly to carbon. And we don't know exactly how much that, all that waste weighs. So it would be like an industry average, basically. So the way that our hauler tracks it now is not real life data. It's based on an industry average. So there are little things like that. You know, for transportation, we have good data on the student transportation side, but we don't necessarily have great data on our maintenance fleet or any other kind of district vehicles. So that'd be part of, you know, what we, what we'd want to track as well. Um, I think we're mostly dependent on a contractor. So like, where's our, how can we maneuver within limitations? Where, where are the parameters? Um, that would be helpful for staff to try to tease out a little bit. Um, and my understanding, um, so I had a brief conversation with, um, Dan and Erin. Um, and my understanding is that, uh, we do have some data. Um, but there is also a lot of data that we don't have. Um, so that some work would be required in order to establish baseline levels that, um, that we would really need in order to, you know, establish goals and accountability and all that. So it would be helpful if staff could, um, articulate how, how much work would be necessary in order to establish, um, baselines? And what that would mean in terms of, you know, goal setting and timeline and all that. Does, have I faithfully represented what you told me?
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in real quick. We, we have some good data and we can share that data certainly for the next meeting on what some of our biggest carbon emitters are, building usage and electricity and, and natural gas and in our transportation. Uh, and, and really depending on the granularity of the committee of where we set those goals and, and those specific targets. The information we, we have now might be sufficient to, to have a good policy. Uh, but certainly when we get to that more granular detail, whether that be an O C or the A Ds uh, down the line or, or some other, uh, document that clarifies exactly what, what, uh, targets we want to go after, we will need to do some additional research on that, on baseline. So we do know that's going to be a part of it. The question is, do we need it before we can finalize the policy or is it something that can come after? And, and I'll stop there and let Erin jump in if I said anything that didn't accurate.
Yeah, Danny, you pretty much covered it. So we have really accurate data in some cases, but for instance, um, for waste, you know, we have some limited waste data, but we don't know what that conversion is exactly to carbon and we don't know exactly how much that, all that waste weighs. So it would be like an industry average, basically. So the way that our hauler tracks it now is not real life data. It's based on an industry average. Um, so there are little things like that. Um, you know, for transportation, we have good data on the student transportation side, but we don't necessarily have great data on our maintenance fleet or, um, any other kind of, um, district vehicles. Um, so that, that'd be part of, you know, what we, what we'd want to track as well. Um, so there's just some pieces that we'd have to get together on exactly what we're tracking and where we draw that line. Um, and also, um, you know, what we choose for the baseline year may be tricky because the further we go back, you know, the less reliable that data might be. So there are just little things like that that we need to, um, iron out before we move forward.
Okay, um. So I guess the other, the other thing that might be worth, um, getting more information about, um, or kind of staff thinking through, and this might be Liz. If, if we can, uh, if we can get a better sense of, um, you know, so far we've been talking about policy and A D. Um, but there are many other mechanisms that we can use to accomplish, you know, to advance the cause. Um, I'm not sure it's really clear to most of us what those other mechanisms might be. Um, so if, if we could get a little clarity on that, it would be helpful, I think. Because we, we do need to keep the policy at a relatively high level of abstraction, you know? Um, it can't be so detailed that it, um, it will be outdated with every technological change, for example. So if we can, if we can tease out how we can achieve what we want to achieve, um, in ways other than policy, that would be helpful.
Great, we're happy to do that, um, on a governance level and then also working with Tanya and Sarah and Jonathan on some other concepts that might be worthy of discussion. So absolutely.
Okay.
I was, this, uh, this is Aaliyah. I, um, my laptop decided it didn't want to be at the policy committee meeting anymore and kicked me out. Uh, now I'm back. Um, but, so I may have missed this, but I, I was wondering, you know, as we, um, just talked about our anti-racism policy and I do know that it talks about including BIPOC communities in this policy. But I, I think, um, one of the things that was missing for me was a little more robust expression of how that intersectionality of climate justice with racial justice, um, and that part of our work here is that work. Um, and so how we continue to use our equity lens and some of the, because we're looking at transportation and some of the, you know, things we're thinking about will have impacts on other ways that we live out our values of the district. So, um, I really appreciated the breadth of this, that it talks about, you know, new materials and, um, curriculum and all sorts of different factors that go into climate justice. But that was one piece for me that, that could have been a little bit more robust. And I'm sorry if I missed discussion about that earlier.
You did.
We haven't talked very much about the curriculum side. Mostly we've been talking operational. Um, is there anything we want to address there?
I guess for more of like a process standpoint, I would appreciate, um, I know we've been doing student engagement. I know we have a climate justice advisory council, I believe, for students, but I'd like continued student, robust student engagement throughout this entire process as well.
So if we could get some, um, this is in, in, in the spirit of asking for info. Um, if we could get some, uh, suggestions from the, uh, engagement folks about, um, how we can sort of meaningfully loop students into our discussions. And, and also, um, I think in addition to that, like, trying to be efficient about the use of resources. Um, if, if that info could also include some ideas about how we could kind of build an infrastructure for ongoing student engagement with these kinds of efforts. Um, I think that would be helpful.
Oh, I was gonna just, um, compliment the curriculum side because we all got to, the board got to experience a curriculum lesson on climate, uh, climate curriculum. And, um, we read this incredibly powerful poem from two indigenous women um, about sort of the way climate change has affected, uh, the land that they call home. Um, and it was just really amazing. So I know that there's, um, a lot going on with the curriculum already and there really will be. Sorry, impactful.
Okay, so, um. Does staff have enough to work with? We gave you a few assignments? Um, I.
We have, we have our assignments.
Okay, um. I, and I want to give an opportunity to, um, to the advocates who worked on this policy. Do you have, um, do you have any, uh, suggestions about other kinds of information that we might, might want to request from staff as we start working through this?
So, um, this is Mike Rosen. I, um, I think you've covered your bases with staff. We're looking at the same thing, um, Nash, particularly national examples, um, from other school districts. There's some examples in Oregon, um, so, um, I think you're on the right track. I don't know, to Amy and Jane, do you have anything you want to say about that?
This is Jane, um. No, I, I agree. I would say that I would encourage, um, I don't know that you're, we're going to find an example of another policy that will feel like maybe what we're reaching for here. And I, I would just like to encourage the board to, um, consider taking a real leadership position on this. I think it's an opportunity.
Hi, this is Amy. Um, I agree with Jane and I actually did a bunch of research at the beginning on other school districts uh, that have taken leadership roles. And there are a few, um, internationally, but, but I think that this, we pass a policy like this, it could put P P S in a real leadership position at the national level, potentially international level. A lot of the school district policies focus on the education side of things or maybe on the operational side of things, but there are very few that are as comprehensive. Talking about both, um, all the different ways to reduce emissions, to enhance sequestration and to, um, increase engagement and preparedness.
So I, I think, um, people can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there is appetite um, among staff and the board to, um, to take a leadership position, um, on this issue. But it's easier when you know what other people are doing, um, to know where the cutting edge is. Um, and I think to the extent that we can, um, we can leverage the work that other jurisdictions have done, uh, on this issue. I, I think it's, um, I think that's a, a more effective way to proceed. Um, if we don't have to reinvent wheels, we shouldn't, so. Um, okay, any other questions?
So just to that point, um, Rita, you know, there's, when I look through it, there's things that are unique to being a school district, like the curriculum, but there are other things that are just like, we're a large entity. So instead of looking at what's, just what school districts are doing, I think there's cities across the country that are doing, um, pretty revolutionary things and taking leadership positions, like whether it's related to transportation or their facilities footprint. Um, I mean, lots of businesses are doing the same thing. Um, I know just in my professional life, um, there are, there are many similarities, again, putting aside curriculum, between a large entity that's moving a lot of people around, that's feeding people, that's, um, you know, contracting and, uh, procuring items, um, that maybe the, the question about best practice and policies, um, the place we look is, um, more cities or potentially businesses versus, um, just other school districts. Um, because I'm sure there's a lot of other, there's a lot of information out there that we could tap into that, um, is not unique to a school district per se.
I, I, I agree. I think we have to be looking at jurisdictions. Um, I don't, I don't know how applicable, um, uh, private businesses would be, um, but worth looking at. Um, so I, I have a request for the advocates. If you have some of this information about other examples, if you could forward it to us, that would be helpful. And if you want to go down some rabbit holes your own self, um, in the next month or so, um, please send us any info that you come up with. Um, it's going to be, this, this is going to be a heavy lift for staff. Um, and it's going to be really, um, across the organization. So to the extent that we can kind of be efficient in use of our collective resources, that would be all to be good. Um, okay, I, I guess my last question to staff is, do you have any questions for us before you go off and do things?
I don't have any questions. I, I think we've got some good materials that we'll be able to provide.
Okay. Okay, um, we are at six fifty-one. Um, any final words on this before we move on?
Okay. One quick note, I just wanted to clarify, it sounds like, um, folks were primarily referring to the matrix, but, um, I just wanted everyone to know that that last version of the policy, the version nineteen is, has been updated quite a bit since the last version of the matrix. So many of the concerns that were addressed in the matrix, um, were resolved in version nineteen of the policy.
Okay, so, um, y- y- yes. Um, and if we could, if staff could update that based on the latest draft, that would be helpful. Um, I know it was, it's from, what, six months ago, something like that. Um, okay. Any other last words? Okay, um, Kara, do we have anybody who wanted to, uh, do public comment?
Yes, we did. Um, Mike Rosen.
Um, hi. So I just wanted to clarify a few things based on the discussion we've had so far. Um, this bears repeating, even though I know you guys already know this, but since we're the largest school district in the state, we're also the largest property owner in Portland and the largest kitchen in Portland and we have a thirty-year program to rebuild all our schools. There's never been a greater need or opportunity to address these issues. Um. I do think we need to be a leader and I did want to emphasize, as Amy mentioned, that this is version nineteen of the policy. We've been working on this for a year. We've addressed, um, the issues in the crosswalk. It's good to update the crosswalk. And I think we've identified, um, all the rabbit holes already and we've avoided them. Um, this issue about what belongs in the A D versus what belongs in the policy is a really critical issue for this policy. I'd remind you that we had a resource co- conservation policy that's existed for almost thirty years. It was incredibly vague, um, and it was, and therefore it was weak and they never wrote an A D for it. And we established targets, not to say how to achieve them, but, um, we, because we understand that is the role of the A D. We really need to move out of this pattern of vague, weak policies and to, and into something that's specific. Um. We can't rely on, this is so unique, we can't rely on our old methods of developing policies. We really need to look at this in a bold way. And then I just wanted to say on the, um, the issue of, um, student involvement, I couldn't agree more with Jackson and we are working hard to involve students. One of the things that we did do through the Climate Justice Committee is we released the draft policy to all the, um, climate justice education courses that are going on now and will be going on and we've asked for feedback and we've started to get feedback from students. But we, um, are very interested in working with Nicole Berg and tapping into the students through the Climate Justice Committee, the students that worked on the curriculum over the summer. And then the last thing I want to say is how much, um, my cat, how much we appreciate being at the table with you guys. Um, we've worked hard on this policy and I would remind you that version nineteen means that we've worked with over a dozen community groups up to this point. And so we've got a lot vested in it. I really appreciate that staff is, this is a heavy lift for staff, but we tried to produce something that would minimize that lift and so thank you.
Thank you. Um, and we have Jane come up.
Hi, um, following on to what Mike was saying, a few, a few things that I wanted to supplement the conversation with. One, um, in thinking about other policies and what other folks are doing, Director Bram Edwards mentioned cities and I just wanted to remind the group that we have, um, among the partners that we've gotten comments and feedback with. One of them was the city of Portland and we did get a, a letter of support from, um, the mayor. And we spoke to his folks that are working on climate issues at the city and they were really excited to have P P S as a partner in helping to achieve all the climate goals in the city of Portland. Um, so that will be some good synergy. Another thing I wanted to touch on was, um, around the emissions audit. So we, you know, fully support and are excited, uh, about getting some baseline data, getting, you know, supplementing what Erin and his team have already, um, been successful in measuring. And I also wanted to, um, talk about some of those things that are perhaps going to be so-called like less return on investment and maybe not, you know, move the needle in such a significant way, but we feel are so important, um, for behavior change and just modeling to students what ultimately, you know, in the bigger picture does actually move the needle on climate. And I know the board has heard from students in the past on some of the issues, especially in the cafeteria, those high visibility places. So, um, I hope that you will consider the impact that those have that may not be specifically in G H G reductions right now, but are really important for, um, the hearts and minds of our students. And. Um, sorry, another place I thought we could look at for a policy could be large universities that, um, I don't think our group has, has cruised through those policies yet. And I think that sums up the rest of my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else for a public comment?
That concludes public comment.
Okay. Okay, it's now six fifty-eight. Um, we could chat for another two minutes. Anything else for the good of the order?
It's not a meeting unless it goes overtime. So I think, I think we need at least five more minutes and really, really, at least.
really, at least five minutes overtime is I mean, that's that's even pretty weak right there. Jackson, can you, you want to get into it on something, anything?
Yeah, I did have a question.
Wrapping up.
So I know at the last meeting, sorry, this will be really quick, but at the last meeting, we discussed assigning policies to committee members. I was just trying to loop back and see if there's been any movement on that.
So Jackson, I can speak to, Rita made the assignment and we are basically having a rolling start on implementing those. A couple got off the ground last week, but not all. So we are getting this new process in order and looping in, trying to find the right, which students are attached to which policy for those conversations. So it's a really important piece and we we are in the process. It's a new it's a new layer of process that I think will have a lot of yield. But it also, with the compression of the holiday week and last week, we did not get all of them in. So more to come.
Yeah, did you did you and Jillian have subcommittees for policies they wanted to get connected to?
I thought we had that list, but it doesn't mean it's complete, Roseanne.
Jackson and Jillian, I'll send the list to you too, and you can indicate which ones you would like to do. Nathaniel as well.
We already did.
They already sent us the list. Jackson and Jillian sent us the list of all the policies they wanted to be on, and I thought you all had that. Did, who else, you sent it to everybody, right, Jackson?
I am very sorry.
So there should be some of those meetings for sure.
That the one that had Jackson on every committee?
No. No, I didn't send it to Liz. I think I sent it to you, Roseanne.
I don't think it got sent to Roseanne or to Liz, and so I am sending it to both of them right now.
Okay, that is on me. I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'll, I'll, no, no one's, no one's in trouble except us for not getting it fully rolled out last week.
And I should have, I should have forwarded on to Roseanne and Liz, Jackson, and and paid attention to that. My apologies for not closing that loop.
Nathaniel, did you did I see you raise your hand?
Yeah, I was wondering if I might be able to be involved in any of the policies that were not taken by Jackson or Jillian, assuming that there are some left. I have not seen the list.
Maybe Nathaniel, you and Jackson and Jillian can talk through that and then send us an amended list. Does that, does that sound like it would work?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So if you remember, the purpose of doing these sort of subcommittees is to try to get through as much work as we can because we've got a huge queue of policies that we need to get through. So this is one of those, all hands on deck, the more the merrier. So anybody who's willing to work will use it. Okay, it's now seven oh two, which isn't quite five minutes over, but I think we've fulfilled our mission. So okay, if there's nothing else, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Larita, it's Ailey. I just wanted to say thank you to Jillian for speaking up about her experiences with the shortage of justice in this meeting. I know that was a big thing. And I also have a thing about just how hard it is, Jillian, for someone who's newer to D S C like you, because we haven't had the chance to meet together in person and build relationship, to like jump in on a crazy Zoom meeting is really challenging. So thank you for your courage and speaking up and sharing that really important insight.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Wheels will be back in, what, three and a half weeks, four weeks? Happy holidays in the interim. Thank you. Bye bye.